To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, order of all the silence. Very much, please be seated. And remember to silence your cell phones if you have them. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. If there are no corrections, I'll second the motion by Raddick to approve it. Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the August eighth meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from Board Administration is approval for the Chairman to sign agreement with the City of Sioux City regarding the use of TIF in the certain urban renewal district for the purpose of engaging in future urban renewal projects. Item five from Human Resources includes A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item six from Secondary Roads is approval of the underground utility permit for Frank Maury slash Metronet and to direct the Chair to sign the permit. I'll move the consent agenda. Second by Nelson. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero. Item seven from Building Services is approval of purchasing a work vehicle for Building Services.
Kenny Schmitz, Woodbury County Building Services. I've got some actually updated information to talk about on this agenda item. This would be a, another pickup truck for the Building Services Department. In the budget, there was a fifty thousand dollar placeholder, placeholder that was approved for this vehicle. Under the financial impact, you'll see Sioux City Chrysler Dodge at fifty-six thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. That is a State of Iowa contracted fleet quoted price. One thing I learned after putting this item on the agenda that I didn't know is unfortunately, if you place the order, the vehicle isn't received until the first and/or the second quarter of next year. They, what they do is they take all these fleet orders and then they start building like vehicles. So I'm told by Dodge that that's normal, that's normal practice. I did visit a little bit with our Sheriff Chad, who gave me some input, suggested that maybe I just take a look at some vehicles that were on the lot. That's, I think what he said, he purchased one of his last vehicles that way and it was competitive. So I have done that. I've got a handout here that I'd like to show you. Now, the vehicle that I did have quoted for order was a twenty twenty-four fifteen hundred Dodge Big Horn. They do have a twenty twenty-three Dodge Big Horn on their lot. They are similar vehicles. There are slight differences, and I'll show you the handout on those differences. So basically, those differences are the twenty twenty-four order vehicle is a level-one equipment group, has a thirty-three gallon fuel tank and eighteen inch wheels and tires. The twenty twenty-three Big Horn that is on the lot has a level-two equipment group, a twenty-six gallon fuel tank, twenty-inch wheels and tires, anti-spin rear differential, step running boards, and front and rear rubber floor mats. The price differences being the twenty-four is fifty-six nine thirteen, the twenty-three is fifty-seven six sixty-four. There's a seven hundred and fifty-one dollar price difference. The difference in between the level-one and level-two equipment groups is the level-two is a next step up, but similar. It has a power seat in it, a sliding rear view window. And then the other, the other differences that you see there, running boards are on it and rubber floor mats. I would, what I would like to do is purchase the twenty twenty-three vehicle that's on their lot for the seven, fifty-seven six sixty-four amount. Fifty thousand of that would come out of the budget. And I talked to Dennis about the remaining seven, seven thousand six hundred and sixty-four. Dennis suggested if we did that, that that money would come out of gaming. Like to answer any questions that he might have.
Kenny, what vehicle is this currently replacing? Is there a vehicle that's going on its last legs and that this is replacing that you had it budgeted for?
So most of our vehicles, we have three vehicles, most of them are getting fairly aged. I think the most recent one we purchased back in two thousand eighteen. The others are quite a bit older than that.
So what do you do with those?
We are going to keep them in service. Originally, my intent was, and that's why I'd only budgeted fifty thousand, otherwise I would have budgeted more. My original intent was-
I'm sorry, we're gonna have to go to a set time and come back to this.
Sure.
Item number eight from Board Administration is our four thirty-five PM set time. This is a public hearing in sale of property parcel, also known as twenty-six thirty-six, South Lyons Street. Public hearing is now open before we receive bids for anyone wishing to speak for or against the sale. Is there anyone to speak for or against the sale itself? Hearing none, I'll move the public hearing to be closed. Second by Taylor, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero. We're now open to receive bids. If you'd like to approach the microphone with your name and address and your opening bid, please. Anyone interested?
Hi there, Anthony Fitch, twenty-six forty South Lyons, the neighboring property. And I'd like to do the bid amount that was set, the four fifty-nine or whatever it was.
Four thirty-seven.
Four thirty-seven, yeah, sounds right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to bid? Seeing none, I'll move the property to be sold to Anthony Fitch for four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second.
Second by Raddick. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero. Thank you. Item eight B is our four thirty-seven PM set time. This is public hearing in sale of property parcel, also known as twelve oh four West Third Street. Public hearing is now open for anyone wishing to speak for or against the sale of the property. Please come forward.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Motion by Taylor, second by Biddinger. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero. Anyone wishing to bid, please approach the microphone with your name and address and opening bid.
Reed Burson with property twelve oh six, or yeah, twelve oh six West Third with RFBR Properties. And I wish to bid the four sixty-seven.
Anyone else?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair, I move that the property be sold to Mr. Burson for four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero. Thank you. Now return back to item number seven. Kenny, you can finish your sentence. Sorry about that.
Thank you. My original intent when we put, when I put fifty thousand dollars into the budget was to trade in one of the older vehicles and utilize that as part of, part of any additional money that we might need. After thinking that over and the extra running that we're going to be doing out at the new law enforcement center, I decided to keep all of the vehicles and just add this as an additional vehicle.
What is the list price for the twenty twenty-three fifteen hundred Big Horn Lone Star Crew four by four?
Sixty-seven thousand four ninety.
And so if I came off the street right now, what would they, do you know what I'd be able to purchase it for?
I, no, I don't know that for certain.
I mean, is it the fifty-seven six sixty-four? The twenty twenty-three? You've given us a, a price of fifty-seven six sixty-four. Is that what they're publicly advertising?
No, I believe that the general public would pay more. Where the county is getting some discounts on this, so.
Okay. I think that was my, my biggest concern is, as, as long as we've competitively like called three or four other places potentially, because I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but-
Yes.
Over fifty thousand dollars, you know, typically as a consumer, we at least check three or four other places with similar or like vehicles, so.
Yeah, this, this is following some of the rebates and the other things that follow, might fall into place like with the Iowa State bid contract for, for the fleet services, so.
Okay, so if we went to somewhere else, you're fairly confident that this price would be similar?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you price any Ford or Chevrolet half tons, or was there a reason that it was just Dodge or?
I didn't. There was a reason for not doing that. I didn't because our Sheriff's Department buys such a large quantity of vehicles that are Ram. That was one of the first questions that came out of the salespeople's mouths, if you will, that, that we are buying in larger quantities. And that is what's causing some of these, that is something that Ram or Dodge considers, so.
So I guess personally seeing, you know, it's about a one percent difference, which is something in bidding, you know, we, we would always see as something where you can go with a higher bid. Usually you want at least two percent before you question that. And being that it would be staff's preference to get something right away rather than waiting a year for a vehicle, I'm fine with your request, so.
So your motion to bid the seven six six four gaming?
Yeah, the, well, yeah, seventy, well, we can probably pull it on CIP now at this point. I don't know, where do you think it should come from?
Gaming, it's a one-time expenditure, the vehicle lasts five years or more.
Okay.
Second.
So just to clarify, the seven, seventy-six sixty-four from gaming?
Yes.
And the fifty from the budget?
On the motion from Raddick, second by Taylor, any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero. Thank you. Item nine from the County Sheriff, for action, this is approval of creating a new clerk three position to handle garnishments.
Good evening. It was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago, the number of garnishments that we are continuing to receive and had reached out to the attorneys that are doing the garnishments. And there is no end in sight to the number of garnishments that we're receiving. In the background information, you see that last year, I think for our, for our Civil Division, we had sixty-five thousand dollars budgeted for revenue. We brought in two hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars, which almost all of that came from garnishments. These are, these are, when they come in, they're somewhat labor-intensive when they come in, and they come in packets, sometimes ninety, hundred, hundred and twenty or more garnishments at a time. And when we get them right now to keep up with the garnishments, it's like all hands on deck. We basically, almost everybody that's in the office, including the Chief and some of the captains, they would laugh because the gals even have them separating, taking the staples out and, and doing all that work so that we can keep up with them because it is a revenue source. So when they, they approached me and, and said, basically, we don't have this, I mean, we're keeping up with it now, but it's taken away from the other duties so much, and if it's gonna continue, would it be possible to come and, and approach the board about getting a, a clerk that would handle the garnishments? The other issue that was brought up around the same time is our housing right now, and it's, this isn't in the background, but because it's not the focus of what the, the position would be. But when they weren't doing garnishments, the time that they were not doing the garnishments, we would have that person focusing on the housing for the jail and working with the County Attorney's Office. I've been working with Luan, having discussions about trying to get some more of the housing. And Joshua might be able to explain the process better than I can as far as having the people served. And there's a, you pick and choose who you're gonna go after, if I'm not mistaken, based on their ability to pay it, and there's a lot of factors going to it. Right now, we haven't been doing as much, because we just don't have anybody to really devote the time to it. And so that person would probably be doing that as well. And so that's, that's the ask, that we would have this, we would add a clerk. Hopefully, the cost would more than be offset. For example, the first month of this fiscal year, we've already done thirty thousand dollars in garnishments alone. Our whole bud, our whole year was budgeted eighty-five thousand in revenue for our whole Civil Division, and we've done thirty thousand already in the garnishments in the first month.
And what classifications are currently doing the work?
The, the same classification, the class three.
Okay. It's Taylor.
Where do garnish, garnishments go currently? Is there a percentage that's kept? I, I forget, like with collections on the county attorneys, I know it's maybe a little different, but does a hundred percent of that go to the general fund? Is it an eighty-twenty split? Do you know, Dennis?
Goes to the general fund.
Okay, so all of it's coming back?
It's part of the civil fees, things like that, that goes to the general fund. So when he's that far over, it does go back into reserves, where in this case, there's enough funds to cover, plus put more money back in reserves.
So right now, do you think it'd be a fair statement to say that if you had another person, you could, I hate to say gain more revenue, because I know that's not the point?
Not in, not in the garnishments, because we don't have any say in, in the garnishments. But I think it will allow us to, to potentially have more revenue in the housing side of things.
Okay.
In recouping the money that's owed for people who have been in the jail who owe us money for the housing.
So it's more along the lines of the duress and the mission creep from other staff that's being taken away, rather than we're not able to get through all these and get this amount of revenue that's out there?
When, when we, when we get the packet of garnishments, we have some people who are, are making a lot more than what a clerk three makes, devoting three, four, five hours a day to pulling staples and doing garnishments and taking away from their other assignments. I give them credit, nobody complains about it, it's all hands on deck. When we get them, we get them, we do them, and we get them done as quickly as we can. But this would allow them to continue to do the other duties that they're generally assigned to.
And my last question is a Dennis question. So I think we've talked about huge heartburn over adding staff, especially with what we have coming this next year. But looking at this, do we, if we wanted to do this, would we actually have to do anything? And meaning, if we're under budgeted by a hundred and twenty thousand to start with in revenue, because if we only budgeted eighty-five, and last year they brought in two hundred and nineteen, would we even need to do a budget amendment, or could they?
The only reason to do a budget amendment, to get into the budget, so it shows up when you do our budgets cycle. Otherwise, it doesn't show up, so we'd probably do a budget amendment to get it in there. And it really didn't have any effect, except it'll get the work done. Plus, like he said, it'll generate more housing income potentially.
But can we increase the amount of revenue? I mean, right now, we said there's only eighty-five thousand we have budgeted in revenue, but there was two nineteen brought in last year.
We'll just amend the budget, put in the wage and the benefits, and then increase the revenue. So it won't show that he's that far over, but he's got money to recover without taxes.
Right.
So when exactly do these garnishments come in? Is it the same day every week? Is it random?
No, not necessarily. When they, when, when they, and I'm speaking a little bit not being the one that handles these things, but when they come in, they generally come in and in a packet. There'll be a manila folder that comes in and, you know, it'll be that thick of these garnishments. And again, legally, I don't know how they, how that process works from, from their end, but we just tend to get a whole lump of them all at one time, and then for two, three days, everybody's trying to get these things done and, and cycled through.
Is there a time sensitivity in doing the garnishment process? Is it like a week, or is it thirty days? Is there?
I couldn't answer that question. Joshua, do you know?
I don't off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know either. I, I probably should have had one of the clerks here to answer the question.
I, I guess just the reason I'm asking is because it doesn't seem like this is a routine daily task necessarily. Could it be done by a part-time person rather than a full-time?
With the volume, I don't think a part-time person would be able to get done and keep up with it. There, I mean, we're getting them on a regular basis. I'm not sure, the two hundred and nineteen thousand number, I don't know what that would mean, how many they're getting, but it's, they told me, because I asked the question, they told me that they thought the person would be, would put in probably around thirty hours a week handling the garnishments, about ten hours a week would then be put towards the housing.
And then what does everybody else do?
What do you mean?
Like the existing staff, do they do no time towards?
They'll do what they're normally doing, so handling all, so the civil clerk who handles all the rest of the civil stuff, so all the mental committals, evictions, all that stuff, she can do that work that keeps her more than, more than busy.
This is some, what, similar to the collections eight person we hired in collections for county attorney where revenue does cover. And in that case, it'll generate more revenue in the county attorney's office, and if they don't, then there's end of the year problem there.
When these, when these first opened up, we were paying overtime to get them done. We couldn't get them done in, in a, in, with all the staff that we had dropping things, we were, we were paying overtime, really unlimited. If they wanted to work as much overtime as they needed or wanted, they could work it just to keep up with them.
I guess, you know, is there gonna be cross-training and people doing?
They will, yes.
Because it, it almost feels like we're creating a new position just to do a task that others don't wanna do anymore, is, is?
No, I wouldn't say that. They'll, we'll, yeah, we'll, we will have them cross-trained, they'll all sit in the same office, just like they do now. That's the other benefit, is like when there are vacations and stuff like that, it'll be one additional person in the office just to, to handle things right now. And if, if one of them's on vacation and we get that batch of garnishments, then it's a real strain.
In regards to the room and board collection, that's a fairly new development that we can no longer get the room and board ordered in the criminal case. It used to be that the sheriff could just file a claim and that amount would be approved in the criminal case. But within the last couple of years, there's some case law where they determined that the room and board claims would have to be filed as a separate civil action, basically a small claims case. And my understanding is that the sheriff's offices that are doing that around the state, it's basically like a, a pro se small claims action that's being handled. So in that regard, that's a new duty or, yeah, right, that the, that the sheriff's office has to do, that they didn't have to before in order to collect the room and board. So I can see that the person be, could be very helpful for that. Luan does work more closely with the sheriff's office on those room and board claims and all that, but my understanding is that there is somebody that's needed in order to help recover that money.
And we, we have, there's plans that when we move into the new facility, that this person would also be able to help out with commissary and some other things that are stressed, you know, with the, with the one clerk that we have up in, in the jail right now. So we will, I'm very confident, I, I, because I wanted them to assure me that if we're hiring somebody full-time, they're gonna put in forty hours a week. I don't believe in paying somebody forty hours a week and having them work in thirty, so they gave me all assurances that, that they can easily keep this person busy for forty hours a week.
I guess it's another one of those things where as a public official, it's like you're glad you can use this revenue to offset the expense, but you're also kind of sad that there's that much revenue coming in from this source. So, but I don't know if anybody else had any questions on it?
Seems to me like we're woefully under budgeted in terms of the revenue, and it will pay for itself, take off some of the workload of people who shouldn't maybe necessarily be in that line of business, so I would, I would move it.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. Funding source would be the department's budget.
Yep, we'll do a budget amendment down the road here, not in May, we'll do it earlier, so it is incorporated into the new budget coming up.
Can we correspondingly do something with the revenue?
Can we what?
Correspondingly do something with the revenue if we're budgeting?
If we increase it by seventy-four thousand, increase the revenue by seventy-four thousand.
It seems like you can increase it by two hundred, but yeah, something that shows to taxpayers that we're not increasing taxes by doing this.
Yeah, they're only eighty-five thousand now, so increase that by seventy-four, and they'll still have more money coming in and what's budgeted.
Well, make sure to note what we're at, at that date as well, when we do the budget amendment, so we can be clear.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten for Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nera includes A. This is approval of a quitclaim deed for the former gravel pit off Mason Avenue and directing the Chair to sign the deed.
Good afternoon. First item on the agenda, we had a gravel pit. You can see on the map that was included with the backup, how it just kinda sits there off the road. Over the years, the property owners filled that in with dirt. We were kinda questioning whether we should be getting farm rental off of it. We were, we went back and did some research, and we found the deed at which time the county acquired this pit. Essentially, we acquired the mineral rights and then agreed to quitclaim it back to the owner upon completion of its use as a gravel pit. Might as well get this property back on the tax rolls, so we prepared a quitclaim deed based on that old legal description, and we recommend it be approved and signed by the Board of Supervisors.
I'll move it.
Second motion by Raddick. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero. Item B is approval of the pre-construction addendum agreement with Iowa DOT for grading and paving one fifty-eighth Street and Benton Avenue.
The Iowa DOT has a need in the course of the Highway twenty project to provide reliable service to the Sioux Land Regional Transit Association that's going to be moving out to the DOT campus for the balance of this year while the project continues. And looking into a full year next year while Highway twenty is also under construction, they're looking at utilizing our hundred and fifty-eighth Street and Benton Avenue as a alternative route to get not only certs traffic, but also DOT traffic in and out as the turning movements become restricted, especially in next year's part of the project. The DOT is proposing to pave this at no cost to Woodbury County. We're free to do, we take ownership upon completion and do with it as we would with any other county road. To me, this is a win-win. It gets the residents a paved road. It simplifies our maintenance, we're not having to run a deadhead of motor grader over into that area in the future. It'll be right on the truck route, we're already plowing a hundred and fifty-fifth Street there, so.
Question for you, Mark. Is this the same road that had a good deal of public discussion that residents expressed?
We had two residents express that they didn't wanna see the road paved.
Right.
They tried a petition drive. They received none.
Okay.
So there's no reason that we can't proceed with this project. None of the other, the other residents are welcoming the possibility of a paved road serving them for the balance of their ownership of properties out there, so.
I don't know if anybody else got calls, but I, I did get a call from one of the residents on the road that has been paying- I don't know if anybody else got calls, but I, I did get a call from one of the residents on the road that has been paying for the, uh, dust control. Uh, adamantly supporting us paving this.
Grady Marks.
Yeah, and, uh, again, uh, in our SIMCO exec meeting, which I was going to bring up at committee meetings, but then I saw this was up here. Uh, which of course includes like, uh, the mayor of Sergeant Bluff and, uh, city council in Sioux City and all our neighboring and surrounding areas. Uh, all unanimously, uh, expect to see that paved as well as certs who had an agreement with the DOT. Uh, you can't have your buses coming in and out with people on them and taking them on the Beckwood County, you know, gravel. So. Um, it's, it's free pavement. We've never said no to free pavement as far as I can tell on the history of Woodbury County. Uh, and I don't think we should start now. Uh, I'll go ahead and move it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Nelson. Any other questions? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is to receive bids for calcium chloride for twenty twenty-four and return them to the county engineer for review and recommendation.
I have, uh, bid tabulation sheets here for the board's use.
This is for the county swimming pool behind the maintenance shed.
Not quite. This year we need more than we did last year, so.
As I noted in the board backup, we are, uh, looking for, uh, additional tonnage this year. We're back up to a hundred and ten tons, which is a lot closer to what our, our normal. Order would be for this material. Uh, we sent out quite a few people, as you can see, looks like we only had two quotes returned. First one is from Scottwood Industries of Overland Park, Kansas. Bid price is four hundred and seventy-four dollars per ton, total of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Four seventy-four per ton again, and fifty-two, one four oh for total price. Next one is from Jericho Services of Indian, uh, Indianola, Iowa. Bid price is five hundred and ninety dollars per ton, total bid is sixty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Recommend the board receive the bids for calcium chloride.
Move to receive.
Second motion by Raddick. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero.
I recommend the board award to, um, Scottwood Industries for four hundred and seventy-four dollars a ton.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. On item D, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Item E is to receive bids for propane for FY twenty twenty-four and return them to the county engineer for review and recommendation.
We have, uh, three bids for propane, it looks like. First is from New Cooperative, Fort Dodge, Iowa. Their bid is one dollar, twenty-five cents per gallon. Next bid is from Johnson Propane Heating and Cooling. They bid one oh four per gallon. The final bid is from Sap Brothers. Sap Brothers bids one forty-nine nine per gallon. I recommend the board receive the bids.
Move it.
Second motion by Raddick. All's in favor, say aye. Oppose say nay. Passes five zero.
I recommend award of the bids to Johnson Propane.
I'll move it.
Second motion by Raddick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you. All I've got, thank you.
Item eleven from the board of supervisors, Mr. Taylor and Bittenger is authorization to de-authorize the clerk two position at Veteran Affairs and authorize a CBSO position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this item, I considers Lisa Robinson, who has recently obtained her CBSO certification. I have handed a letter from Director Lonnie Coleman and also from Commissioner TJ Fennel, um, to all of you and would move that that be received? Or both be received?
Second.
I'll move. Motion by Taylor, second by Bittenger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero.
So there are three positions currently, two CBSOs and one clerk. And in the past, we've had as many as three CBSOs and one clerk. And at the same time, beneficiary dollars are bringing in excess of two point two million dollars monthly, which is the seventh highest in the state. And they've been doing an awesome job on renewed efforts. And so with that, um, we'll hand it over to Director Coleman.
Yeah, we also had our district six meeting today, um, and Sasha Downs went up to LaMarche for that. We did receive back some astonishing numbers from that. Um, for the amount of veterans that we have in the, in Woodbury County, only twenty-eight percent are actually getting services right now, service connected. Because we are still trying to reach out those other, that other sixty-two percent. And with that being said, for us bringing in two point two is pretty astonishing. And then also out of those twenty-eight percent, forty-seven percent are using all VA healthcare that we have here in Woodbury County. Whether it be the VA, the VA healthcare, um, the service connection disabilities and the assistance that we have through the county. And like he said, we do have, um, two point two that we are bringing in monthly and that was in June that we got that last estimate. Um, we do get that from the cit, or from the state that it gets emailed down to us by county. And I think we are the fourth highest county that we have. For, as we, so, and the reason why we're trying to move her to that CBSO spot is due to the fact that we have these large amount of numbers. And to get in that other reservoir that we are having trouble either scheduling or scheduling out, sending people out to outreach events, which you have all seen on our calendar that we're doing more outreach events. To bring in more veterans from the smaller towns of Woodbury County who can't make their way here to Sioux City. So we're going out to them to put in their claims for them and help them file on their behalf.
And supervisors, when, when that claim is filed on their behalf, it's, it's vital that they're handled quickly and with a lot of attention. Uh, we're talking about veterans that have, you know, all kinds of different trauma and physical issues and they get frustrated. Um, they need their healthcare, they need their access to their benefits as, as quickly as possible. And this job move for a small amount of a little over three thousand dollars will help, will help our veterans and it will increase the amount of money coming into our Woodbury County homes and our, our local economy.
One of the things I'm really appreciative of is, you know, when you take the office out to Pearson and you're servicing twenty-seven veterans out there. Who would otherwise be driving in, taking off some time from work, that's outstanding. It's also had, I think, the unintended impact that it can leave you short-staffed. And so for me, I think it's really laudable if you have, uh, a clerk who has gotten the CBSO certification. Um, like you said, TJ, to be able to then, um, for under four thousand dollars, make that redundancy. Um, and duplication of services, no matter who's in the office, I think just makes a whole lot of sense. And so I'm very appreciative of that. And just one thing to note, because, you know, we had a good discussion, Dan and I, uh, when we were at the commission meeting. How did we get to where we're at? Because normally we like to see these on improvement requests. One of the things that I think was confusing is at that time, it said moving from a clerk two to a clerk three position. And it actually follows the clerk three pay, but it's not an additional person. And I think there may have been a little bit of confusion, especially as we said. Look, we're not going to add bodies. We want to hold the line. Um, this is holding the line on FTEs. It's just for a nominal cost. Uh, making that staff member that much more, um, have the ability to respond no matter where the office is and doing outreach events.
I guess one thing that was added in the discussion was this person was going to get a license or?
And that's the accreditation that she completed.
Okay, then that was, I think, some of the discussion we had is that when that is completed, I think we look at it again, so.
And she completed that last April, I believe. And it also will help because with, um, Sasha still being in the military, she has those long trips that she has to take or deployments, you know, and I know that we have some that are coming up for her. It will also help the office keep more people coming into the office because if you think about it, and not a lot of you know this, but when you sit down for our initial brief, it could take up to three hours for one service member. So for me to be occupied for three hours and Lisa to not be able to do the position for the CBSO. We have other service members who are coming in during their lunch hour and want to be seen, but I can't be seen because I now have this client in my office. It, it will help us eliminate that process of I'm the only one in the office that can do the claims. Now we have Lisa to help step up and take some of that burden. But with that, we're also now distributing her clerk jobs between the three of us. So it's not, she's doing all the clerk and CBSO. We're taking part, so all three of us are doing the complete job of the VA representative.
The other thing I want to just commend you all on publicly while we have you here is going out to the one eighty-fifth, going out to the one thirteenth. I can't tell you how many soldiers, twenty years old, say, what do you mean I have insurance? I have TRICARE that I could be on and I've been paying this. Or as you've been mentioning to them, they're going downrange, they're going to get hurt downrange and not have it documented and say, well, it's not a big deal. And then not be able to file for some sort of disability or service connection.
And twenty years later, it is a big deal.
Right, right. And impacts their life forever. But you being out there and letting them know and educating, uh, especially younger soldiers, but even some old ones who don't listen so well. Um, is really, really important. So I'm very appreciative of what you're doing.
Mr. Bittenger, anything else to add on your joint item?
No, no, Jeremy's covered everything, but just, no, thank you for the work you guys do, taking care of our veterans, so.
Any other questions?
Well, with that, I would, I would move to de-authorize the clerk two position at Veterans Affairs and authorize the CBSO position.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Bittenger.
Where's the funding source on that then?
We have a funding source there. This is another case where we will amend the budget before we actually get into budgets this coming year. So we show the right numbers in there. This will happen with severance since we certified our budget last year. We'll get all those in, in December before we send budgets out. So we'll actually do two budget amendments this year, but this would come from probably cash reserves.
Do you do one amendment essentially and put like the sheriff's item and this item?
We're going to include that. There's some others we made adjustments in. When you get it included to our budgets, when we look at it, it will be true budgets.
Okay. Any other questions? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item twelve from the board, uh, Mr. Taylor, is to approve up to thirty thousand in twenty twenty-three CIP in order to replace or fix the window framing and glass in two areas of Tribeview building, including the one vandalized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So unfortunately, um, that area, um, had a never-do-well, uh, potentially who took out a window, um, in Lonnie's office. So this is authorization for up to thirty thousand dollars in CIP. We recently, um, had some, um, sizable dollars freed up to fix a broken window and replace the door and window system. I did check with Melissa, our deductible is at fifty thousand dollars. So that's really not going to help us in this situation. Kenny has laudably reached out to me. He is going to replace the glass at seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Even though it's not a long-term fix, right now it's plywood and as much as I think Lonnie likes seeing that in our office. Um, the, the window can be replaced for a nominal cost, but it's very, very warped and that's not going to be a very good long-term fix. This was a twenty twenty-two, um, CIP and just didn't get done for whatever reason. Kenny believes that not only that, um, location, but there's also another framing that's in similar condition where there's a lot of outside air infiltration. Um, eventually that door may be tougher to open. This is on the social services rolling hillside. Um, so it may make sense to do them both. But we spoke before the meeting and so, um, this will allow him to get going on this, um, to be able to replace not only that, uh, window. With real framing and glass and that door entrance, um, to Director Coleman's office. Uh, if he believes that it'll be more cost-effective, um, to do both areas, he would come back to the board. Um, but this would authorize him to get going, um, on something that definitely for the long term needs to be fixed. If you have any other comments?
And also just, um, we did go over to the gas station where the person had left. Um, and the video is clearly showing that they were very upset at one of the gas station attendees and backed up and just drove off and flung rocks into the window. So it wasn't any kind of, like, I want to say, well, it is vandalism, but it's not, they weren't aiming it towards us by any means. Um, but I know that with this, if we have that traffic and getting those potholes fixed that are down there by Tribeview would really help eliminate probably that loose rock scenario. But also in the long run, if that isn't going to get fixed, that we need something that's more shatterproof because this happened at six o'clock on a Sunday night. And we didn't come in until Monday at eight, well, seven-thirty. We didn't see it till then. We're lucky that nobody went into the building through that window and either got hurt or took items from the county.
So out of curiosity, what's the, what's the door issue and what's the change?
So the reason why we have two doors is the one that goes directly into Lisa Robinson's office. When we had to have a paramedic go in there for a service member, they could not get their door in through that. So they put it in, they have another door in my office that is more easy accessible for the paramedics to bring their, the, the cart in or the bed in. And, um, the one that's always used all the time, it is now locking. It's like catching. I think the framework is just going bad on both doors. And there was drill marks because at one point the doors were bolted shut. Well, instead of fixing the holes, they just left them open. So we have open air coming through those holes in that metal frame of the doors.
So like whole, Kenny was saying, that whole system is framed as one continual. So there's like that four by eight window. And then it's adjacent to the door, but that whole frame is warped on the bottom and the sides. And so the doors.
Okay, so these are the aluminum commercial?
Yes.
Okay, that's kind of what I wonder. Were, have you gotten bids?
The last time, the last time we got a bid, it was twenty-five thousand.
And sorry, I didn't see you sitting there, Kenny. Um, so if, if there was anything that you wanted to add or amend, or if I misspoke or mischaracterized anything, feel free to correct.
Uh, I think you were fairly close, uh, in your comments. Um, really, uh, again, there, there are two entrances on that side of the building. Entrances, if you will. It used to be at one point a video store and that's why it was designed that way. Um, the windows and the door entrances are just huge. The unfortunate part is I, uh, they're approximately, the window themselves are approximately five foot by eight foot. Um, they are single pane glass and so they are a huge energy loss. Um, and so that's something we'll take a look at when we look at replacements there, so.
Well, and you brought up those doors sticking and everything too. I know in a lot of those commercial aluminum frames like that. Uh, when they get a lot of heat in the summer, they expand and that's why they stick, you know, you, sometimes, uh, there's another business on Hamilton. You know, it's on that's, you know, facing the sun the same way. You can't even open the doors and they're in business. So, uh, it's, it's kind of interesting.
And there's also some, it's not just the framing itself. There's also some structural issues with the building, uh, wood around that framing that needs some attention, so.
So it should probably be treated lumber instead.
Yeah, and I think, um, and it's something. Yeah. And I think, and it's something we can talk through, but I think that their accessibility with the emergency crews can probably be solved if they, if they would use the social services entrance in the hallway. And then we could possibly eliminate the door that's in your office. I think it would be a better long-term.
And we've talked about rearranging Lisa's areas where that would also be a good avenue, because with the company behind us, there is a nice S sharp turn to go back there, so we just would want to make sure that their, their cart can actually fit through that. Another thing is with service members who have PTSD, light is something that they look forward to. They don't like being in enclosed space, so that's why I think we also have those bigger windows. I know there was talkage about shortening or making the window smaller and breaking it off, and that's fine, as long as we have some sort of view for them, because that is one of their triggers. So we try to go based on service members who are coming into our office as well.
Kenny, is this, is thirty thousand then appropriate, you think?
I think that's appropriate, possibly for one of the entrances. I think to get both of them done, it would be more than that. Again, as Jeremy said, I'm going to look at having this priced several different ways, just to see what, see what it looks like. If, if we need to do something additionally, I think we can come back at the board at that time and...
And we do have money allotted in our budget line for building purposes that can be used towards that as well.
And then I guess I'm curious, so you're on the region, right? I'm always forgetting who's on which committee, but are you on the mental health region? Oh, you are. Okay, so is there any idea that we could maybe go to them and ask for any improvements to the facility, since I don't believe we charge any rent, right?
Bring it up.
Tell them we've done the Veterans Affairs side, and we're waiting to see what they're going to do for their side.
They do sometimes get swag from us whenever we get new stuff, so you know.
There we go. Good notes, good notes.
You guys get the best of swag, too, so.
Well, with that, I would move to approve up to thirty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three CIP in order to replace and fix window framing and glass in two areas at Tribeview.
Second.
Second the motion by Taylor. Any discussion?
Further discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Item thirteen is reports on committee meetings.
So I did have Simco Exec, which I brought up earlier. We did, of course, talk about the road, and we also discussed the new building and the timeline as it's quickly approaching the time where it'll be moved into and ready. So we also had an announcement of Brian, I believe it's Pearson, I think is the new transit director, will be taking over for Kurt Miller. Once the building's complete, I think Kurt plans to retire. And then we had somebody upgraded from an accountant to the finance director in the absence of our finance director, so those were the new news from our meeting.
Dan and I had Veterans Affairs, I think we covered a lot of it and are talking on our two agenda items, just to reiterate, they're going to do, they just did Cushing Open House, scheduled for August sixteenth, Sergeant Bluff on November eighth. But they're really doing a great job just getting to all these different areas. And the PAC Act, if you're familiar with that, where there were open burn pit areas, and veterans have had, whether it's lung issues, they opened that up, so that can actually be backdated by a year, but you had to have that in by August ninth. Pushed it back by a few days, but that's caused a real influx of people who say, yes, you can get service connected for it, but if you want it backdated by a year, it has to be in by this time. So they received a flood, but they're doing a great job and really appreciative of them, so.
The Conservation Board have been receiving quite a few complaints about the swimming lake being closed at Little Sioux Park this summer and last summer because of low water levels. Several citizens had suggested that it was because of the pumping from the, the rock pits that the county is currently using right around Little Sioux Park that was lowering the water level for that swim lake. And so the Conservation Department, in conjunction with, with our county engineer, have a series of monitoring wells down there. And they, they sent off some information to the University of Iowa and asked them to, to look over the information to see if, if it was in fact the pumping of our, of those rock pits that is causing the low water levels at Little Sioux Park. And we got the information back last week and that it is not. They, they blamed it on very extreme and prolonged drought, as well as a low river flow from Little Sioux River. So we are hopeful that the weather padding, weather pattern is changing, and the rains will start finding us once again, and we can maybe have that swim pond open by next summer. But unfortunately, until the, the drought starts to let up, that pond will probably have to stay closed. But just wanted to share that for the good of the public, and we know that it's taken a negative effect on Little Sioux Park and the towns of Crextonville and Anthem, but again, we're, we're at the mercy of Mother Nature, so. But other than that, that's all I had.
Could I get a copy of that report, since my wife was told it was my fault?
Yeah, we could sure send that to you. You just want it because it says the University of Iowa on it, right?
That way we know the report's correct.
Yeah, that's true.
All I have is the WCICC committee, the IT, no, they're doing a great job. They're working on installing new desktops, phones on the city side, then they'll come over to the county. And then just a good note is more county and city employees are not falling for some of the, the testing for scams or phishing emails, and so those are going down, people that are clicking on attachments, and so that's a good thing. We're having less infiltration of the network, so that's it. Kudos to John and the IT guys.
In, ladies.
Any other reports on committees? Hearing none. Item fourteen, citizen concerns. Any citizen concerns on items not already addressed on the agenda?
Doyle Turner, twenty-seven thirty-eight, two hundred Street, Mowville. I was, I've talked to several board members, and it appears like there's some disagreement of understanding on the tax, the way the solar panels are taxed. And I was just kind of hoping that maybe we could get that straightened up, and maybe you could address it in board concerns. And maybe, because I think the public needs to know if, if there's a tax-free time, that they aren't paying taxes, and it sounds like they do have some property taxes and then a production tax. If you could just kind of go over that, so the public knows what we're looking at. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other citizen concerns?
This kind of overlaps into board concerns, too. The cities of Sergeant Bluff and Sioux City are working on a bicycle trail that will connect the Sioux City trails and the Sergeant Bluff trails. They received a federal aid grant for this. Plans are being prepared. I'll pass out these information sheets and talk about them just a little bit.
Do you want us to receive those? Sure. I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor to receive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero.
The board isn't being asked for any contribution on this project beyond allowing the trail to occupy county right-of-way. Currently, from the top of the hill where Old Lakeport Road joins Lakeport Road, it becomes county right-of-way at that point. That's where the trail, as it comes out of the Green Valley Golf Course, will be coming up and intersecting Lakeport Road. It'll be running on a separate paved trail, five to ten feet off of the shoulder of our county road. I can't remember if it's K twenty-five, but Old Lakeport Road in portions of rural Woodbury County. Again, there's no cost to the board on this. It will be by, or it will be going past some of the county residents. You know, Sioux City and Sergeant Bluff will be the ones who will be maintaining the trail, including snow removal in the winter. There'll be some mailbox removals, a couple tree removals that will take place as part of this. But in case the board gets questions, you know, they're looking at a paved concrete trail connecting the two communities, and again, running within the right-of-way, just outside the shoulder of Old Lakeport Road from north to south.
Is there a name for the trail?
I'm not sure. That would be a Matt Salvatore question, I guess.
I don't know if there's like a plywood or Sioux Bluff or...
Right. I, I'm not sure it's been named at this point. There's probably naming rights out there available.
It's the Old Lakeport Trail.
But they're looking at an April twenty twenty-four letting date, so we could be looking at construction in next year. So I just wanted the board to have some awareness of the project and where it'd be running. It's on that west shoulder of the highway.
Thank you.
And it's kind of a nice thing to hear, because there was a lot of people complaining about lack of sidewalks out in that area in the past, so at least have one on one side.
Any other citizen concerns? Hearing none. Board concerns, item number fifteen. To respond to Doyle, I, I did speak to, I believe, Mr. Priestley, and I think it was him who let me know that, yeah, there is also a discrepancy. There's greater income to the county and general industrial as it relates to solar, industrial solar. So that'll obviously be a part of the discussion as we consider it as a new ordinance amendment. Do you have something else?
Just my understanding, and I think we had asked this question, and I looked down to my left on this. At one point, we had talked about in the course of our debate whether or not it's taxed differently. And my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong in this, Joshua, is it's not taxed differently per se, but that the rollback formula, when it's applied to industrial versus, let's say, agricultural preservation, is different. And to me, it would beg the question, there may be an impetus to not want, for some people not to want it to move into industrial and say, well, the rollback's going to be that much different. Or when we heard from a company saying, we're not looking for it to be in industrial, that may be a reason why. So I don't know if, if you believe those statements are, are correct, that it's the rollback factor that's different in each zoned area rather than the taxation based on zoning, or if I'm putting you on the spot.
Well, I think it's something that we could address at some point. I don't think that we should have too in-depth of a discussion during the board concerns portion of the meeting. So, yeah, I don't feel comfortable answering that at this point.
So maybe in, in terms of our response to you, our, my hope then, if we can't address it right now, would be to come up with something the next week or two and just say, this is the answer.
Any board concerns?